I'd like to call the need to order this evening from Hathaway Church Campus Pastor David Edmonds is here and I'd like to come forward to lead us in the flag. Yeah, I did well.
This is a brand new megamicrophone.
The louder you talk, the better it works.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's pray. God, today we're grateful for this weather that we've received and thankful that you've brought us through the storm and grateful that there wasn't too much damage and thankful for the precipitation that we've been able to get in. Or we're just grateful for our community, thankful for the opportunity that we have as civic leaders to participate in it. And I pray for the leadership that's before us even now. I pray, God, for unity among them. I pray for wisdom with for each and every one of these men and women, Lord, who helped to lead this great community. And we're grateful for all the leadership across the board here in this great town. God, we're thankful for the growth that we've been able to experience, for the opportunities that seem to be popping up everywhere all over town each and every week. And God, we're just grateful for our schools and just for life and health and community. And Lord, I just pray to continue to give wisdom and guidance to these leaders as they continue to seek, Lord, the right thing to do when it comes to maybe some difficult tasks. And so they talk to engineers or different firms and, Lord, I just pray to give them the right frame of mind and, Lord, that they might leave God better than when they founded, as we all should. We're grateful for all that you do. We know that all things are created by, with, and for you. And, Lord, we love you. We pray for this in the good name of Jesus. Amen.
Before we approve the agenda, I'd like just to take a moment to acknowledge Bob Kirkendall is sitting in this evening for Ryan Pett. He's one of the other esteemed members of Morris Lane's attorney firm, a highly regarded trial lawyer. So thank you for being here tonight, Bob.
Thank you.
Hopefully you won't bother me or leave me just listening. Thank you for being here in my absence. Do we have any other questions? I'd like to seek approval of the agenda. You can take a motion unless there's any questions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Brent motions. Fifty seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. We're going to have citizen comment time. It's an opportunity for members of the community to speak for three minutes. It's not a discussion. This is the opportunity for you to speak, we'll listen, and as we go through, if there are people who want to visit and share information, we'll close. I'll close this. So I'd like to open up citizen comments. Anyone that can forward, please do so now. Russ?
Russ Wallen, 19894 West Catalog Drive, president of Trop Incorporated, also at East Hardware, amongst other businesses. Well, why am I here tonight? I have requests, questions, and potential concerns related to the North Frontage Road project, which I understand is on the agenda for tonight. I come here in good spirit, good spirits, and in an act of love and kindness. I want to be very communicative as to where our businesses are at, in particular my business, but also draw attention to the back row. That's North Frontage Road. We're well represented here tonight. I want that to be acknowledged. Okay? I have spoken to everyone that's here and others who could not be here, generation could not be here tonight. Obviously, this is their business time right now, but I'm also representing them. I have wants, needs, and desires that will ensure that my business will be able to continue viably and have ongoing operations during the project, a project that I want. To be clear on that, I think everybody wants this project. But we have some pretty significant access and restrictions that we're going to have to overcome, manage, and acknowledge, and come up with a plan. My largest ask, want, and concern is the duration of the project. As it's been presented to me, it's seven weeks. It could be seventy weeks or whatever that number is. It could be whatever that arbitrary number is. What I'm asking for is that we convince that down to four weeks. And how we could potentially go about getting that is to have a six-day-a-week working schedule, sunup to sundown, or if the finances allow, bring out the lights, let's work till midnight. The concern is that if the project is executed as it's been presented to me, and I give wiggle room for as it's been presented to me, things could have changed. And that's perfectly fine. But for me, in my business, it's going to be pretty tough to stay in business the way that we're looking at. I didn't give consideration to what my numbers would look like in the first two weeks of this project and decide if I just close and try to resurface on the other side. If it's more cost-effective to just cut off the revenue versus the overhead of staying in business with little to no revenue. I think my counterparts back there, our business owners on the same North Frontage Road, they've got to be thinking the same thing as well. The other businesses that are represented here, represented here too, I didn't realize this until I went and talked to them yesterday, in the last twenty-four hours, that there are aspects of their business that may or may not be able to function the way that the project has been described to me. Again, if it's different than that, great, we need to have some conversation on that. What I'm asking for specifically is a performance-based project for whoever we award this contract to. When I say performance-based, I mean based on time, of course, economics of it as well. But if they get done early, we should reward them, call it a performance bond, call it what you want. But it's kind of important to some good-sized businesses here in the town that we expedite this project, a needed project, a wanted project. We lack some clarity on this, and I don't know, and I don't want to speak on behalf of my co-business owners back here that are on the road, but there are aspects of North Frontage Road that if we were to execute it as is, that I'd like them to be able to speak to. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Russ. Appreciate your time, man.
Hi, y'all. I'm David. I'm the store manager at Premier Grid Plains on the east side of town here. The project that's out there on the highway has affected us a little bit since we lost the driveway. But we also gather a lot of stress off that road that's going to happen in the future. So just want to echo what Russ says. It's going to be a pain because we get semi in and out of there, and making that real tight jackknife has been difficult for some drivers. Some drivers are a little bit skilled more than others. But from what Russ tells me yesterday, if we cut that road in half, it's going to make that travel more difficult in and out. We'll have a little bit of a benefit due to the new driveway off the highway. That will help us a little bit, but the other folks will be suffering a little bit more having their trucks in and out, especially that repo guy right next to us. He has a lot of trucks coming in and out and making those turns as well. So just wanted to hear that. I see a lot of heads nodding, and I'm pretty sure y'all can understand some of the meanings. Thank you for your time tonight.
Hello, all. I'm Jeremy Edwards. I own Norris Clinic Center, 19918 West Catalog. We run somewhere seventy-five to a hundred-plus vehicles through my shop in a month's time. And a majority of them, if you throw a percentage, maybe forty percent are tow-ins. Very young, the big truck here, he's going to be tough. And a lot of our parks deliver semi trucks in and out throughout the day. So we will be affected, obviously, our daily walk-in traffic and people coming in for estimates, our opportunities to get business. That might be a challenge getting in and out of there as well. So obviously, I did know everything that Russ is concerned about. He may have a plan for this already, but I sure need to see that close down for seven, eight, ten, fifteen weeks. And we'll be the ones to suffer. Thanks for hearing me out. Thank you.
I'm Skip Costa. I'm at Gartner Vetted Area Clinic in 19912 West Catalog Drive. Even right now with the ARPA detours and such, it's affected our clients as far as being able to get to us adequately. Kind of caught us a little off-guard. We got the letter, and the project was supposed to start, I mean, it started like a week earlier than that. We tried to communicate that to our clients, but still caught us off-guard, you know, as far as the change in the timetable. So we would appreciate, you know, having some clarity. I guess I'm interested to hear kind of what is the plan. I haven't heard is that the way that's going to be done. But we appreciate you guys taking up the comments. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Anna Tredwell, President of Gartner Lions Club. I'm coming on on behalf of the Lions Club in regards to the fireworks tent. So looking at the projects, it looks like there's several projects that is going to be part of kind of this bid. And I would request that you do work with us and the other businesses on the timeline. So if it is possible to start onto those other projects first and not have the Frontage Road be right during Fourth of July fireworks tent season, we would be grateful for that because our tent is right at the Kansas Appliance Center. And we're already facing a challenge with Wichita selling the bigger fireworks spout, so I think our profits are going to be cut in half already. And then you add then having more difficulty to get to us. I think it would really be very, very difficult on ourselves this year if, so I'm just asking that you, you know, you've heard, let's try to get together, make sure you're four and everybody work together as a team to try to work on a schedule and a timeline and what things can be done to make it easier. Because we all want it, it's just going to make it a little bit easier and better for you as far as timing. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Today does that all of agenda?
Sure. You can make it a longer day.
I didn't take the full three minutes. You have to.
Like I'm in peace. Let me ask you this. If this were on Main Street for seven weeks, what would the reaction be? Think about that. We had a three-day interruption for Scraven and Hopp Main Street. What was the reaction? If it was bloody murder online? And that's not, we're not here in that spirit, in that way. But if it were Main Street, would we be, where would we be with this project? It's still a necessary project. It's something to give fruitful consideration to. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll go ahead and close citizen comments. Thank you for expressing your concerns. We're going to do our best to make a painful situation as painless as possible. We'll be looking on that. Okay, we're moving along here. Ex parte conflict of interest declaration. This time I'd like to give council a chance to clarify the conflict, the communication they have that might influence their ability to consider the items on today's agenda in question. Okay, thank you. Appointments, nominations, recognitions, nominations. City Administrator, three per se.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, pleasure this evening to be with you. Really proud to have Mr. Randy Raynard here with his wife Jody and discuss the opportunity to recommend him to the SCAC Emergency Communications Committee. You know, we got a clicker out here. Thank you. The SCAC membership, which is a coalition of elected officials, appointed officials from Cedric County, meet quarterly on Saturdays. Our SCAC representative is our primary's Councilwoman Hall and our secondary is Vice Mayor Keaton Michael Fish. They get together and they talk about issues that affect the county, things that are concerned all of us. We were approached by county staff about the opportunity to recommend one of our citizens, a city of the second class, which God it is, to the new nine-one-one Emergency Communications Community Advisory Board. Mayor, we've inquired with Citizen Randy Raynard to see if he would be interested. The purpose of this agenda items is to consider recommending again to serve in this way. So staff recommendation is to recommend him to SCAC for appointment to the Cedric County Emergency Communications Community Advisory Board. As I understand it, this is just step one. I've seen your resume, so I think you got a pretty good shot at step two. So if the council is so willing, we'll recommend Randy to SCAC and we'll decide if they're going to appoint him to serve in this way on the Emergency Communications Board. With that, I would take any questions?
I'll just make a brief comment. Spent a couple hours at the community garden, working with Randy, and when you do that, you get to know someone and their background. He sent me an email and said that, you know, appreciate the help and kind of nice person. I might be interested in getting more involved in city government. And then the next day I was looking and I was reading some material and thought, man, this just sounds just like Randy. So fairly quickly from his request, we sent him this opportunity, hopefully to serve, and I think he's more than qualified. And I would make a motion that we recommend him to the advisory board and serve in that capacity.
I'll second.
You have motion? Keaton, second? Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There we go. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll try to do the sitting for out.
Moving on, consent agenda. Any questions or issues in that? Hearing none?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We'll accept that. Round seconds. Krista? Seconds. Brent makes the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Unfinished business? None. Moving on to new business. I won. Financial report. CFO, Matt Wong.
I have a question to read through this, but please stop me. I'm going to do that. All right, this is just a summary of our fund base for quarter of the year. This is just a breakdown of our credit accounts. Most of our funds are in the operating account that first time they're funded in here in town. We also have some muddies in Commerce Bank and in C D Investors, which is we have ten fifty cash account right there. We have a little bit invested, cash mutual investment pool. Typically, we reinvest those for up to a hundred-eight days, but right now the daily rate is actually higher than that. Okay, then, everything outside of this one here is pretty much just idle cash. So we're not actively using rates. We try to put it in for longer term. Investments win, the infrastructure structure is, it's just a shift of the rates return. And right now we're getting very high rate of returns, historically high at our operating account. Because that account is what they call a sweep account. So the funds in that account every night, most of them are swept out to various entities that they deal with, and they reinvest the next day in our head. Okay, so I'll talk a little bit about fund balance. This is going to be kind of a refresher of what we did in the, your orientation meeting. But again, if this is too much, help me to move on. Just going to define what a fund is. It has an accounting entity for recording expenditure revenues. Except we operate seventeen different funds. They all have their own rules for how the money is expended, et cetera. General fund is the primary operating fund of the city. We can use general fund money for pretty much anything. But we, for organization stake and for the different operations that we have, we take advantage of other funds that we add to that. And it's with special revenue funds, which is going to include property tax, levy funds like a library, which is where we collect property tax that we levy out to library, pass down to them. We also have the highway fund, not appropriated, which is just our street fund for collect the fuel taxes from the state and county. And we'll transfer some monies into there for their administrative operations of the street fund. Capital projects fund, we actually have two. We have our normal capital improvement fund, which is where we fund large capital projects. We transfer a portion of our sales tax receipts into there every twice a year. And then we have seven star bond fund, which we use for accounting our contribution to the star bond. Enterprise fund, this could be our business-type funds for water and sewer funds. We operate water and sewer utility, and those funds are operating on more of a accrual, multi-accrual basis than strictly half-based like our normal funds do. And then we have reserve funds. Those are going to be where we transfer money from any operating fund, typically where we collect significant revenue. We will transfer a portion of that revenue into reserves for equipment, for infrastructure for the water and sewer utilities maintenance, et cetera. This is a fund structure graphic that just kind of shows how our different types of funds and which, how they're categorized. General fund includes all of our general government stuff, could be admin, mayor, council, city hall, simply operations and facilities and emergency court. Also public safety, so police, recreation, culture, community parks, community pool, community center. We own the library building, and we pay for the maintenance costs for that. And then also we, in the past, we've also put aside a little bit of community next to the city house on our own. And the public community development, city planning, government enforcement. And basically, the advantage might, you know. And again, I'll talk a little bit about the special revenue funds, the highway fund, the street fund, the library fund, special parks and recreation fund. This is more of a, we transfer it into here from the general fund, and we use this for larger, smaller scale capital projects in the park system. We'll talk about some of those later tonight. The charity proposed fund, that's the fund where we collect our hotel bed tax, the temporary guest tax. The CID fund, that's where we collect the money for attending the CID, they levy a two percent sale tax. We collect that and we transfer that to them monthly, except for one percent of the old back for administration. CID Gunnar Gallery and the T B B, the transportation district for the Gunnar Gallery. That is a little specific, sale taxes that are funded on those activities that are being accounted for. The main sales tax that is collecting electricity, state or state star ones. One major fund, our debt service fund, we do levy, currently we're levying, I can't remember exactly, it was about a million and a half there for U K of the city debt. And then we have a general grant fund that we use to both collect and pay out proceeds, typically for the senior center. And we've done some other things in the past, but that's mostly what we're doing right now. Talk about our project funds, our enterprise funds are, and then we have our. The, when we define the fund balance, there's any prior year cash remaining in the fund plus any revenues from the year minus city expenditures. Certain funds are budgeted, and we need to adopt expenditure authority for them during the budget process. And we are not allowed to exceed that expenditure authority, or else we have to essentially redo the budget and adopt it over again, if I don't like to. This is a change of fund balance. I've got two, I'm sure this is just what the fund balances were in prior years through the first quarter. And I think you're still in the, in the, in the, in the, in the, you'll see it will show fund balance. Basically, when we saw that first, it was fund balance, we didn't have a fund balance now. There was. Just notice that we haven't been spending down those capital improvement funds as we have been completing those large capital projects. Like I said, most of that's temporary number, most of that balance is temporary number process. Our different types of revenue, property tax, this is, we have the warrant tax, essentially meaning current, the word warrior or whatever, but essentially it's, you know, we levy tax based on a, you know, millage, which is a thousand, seven hundred percent, which is a hundred. So when we talk about thirty mill, we're talking about three percent, essentially is what that means. We levy thirty-one point some mill this year for city operations, but we have three bills that goes to the library, I guess that's about a million and a half, this is one of the interest fund. This is a graphic shows, the red line is our mill levy, which has dropped slightly since 2022. The blue is our assessed valuation, which is steadily increased for so in the last three years of prior, but still steadily going forward. Other types of revenue, sales and compensated use tax. Sales tax is point of sale, collected tax, proceeds, compensated use, the sales tax collecting outside of the district. So if you go to the city of Wichita, you buy a car, they're going to charge you the Gunnar sales tax rate, they're going to remit that back to us when it comes to us as compensated use tax. Say when you buy something on Amazon, they're going to collect based on the Gunnar tax rate, and they're going to remit that instead, we'll pay to us as a form of compensated use tax. License and permits, this is going to be building permits, non-licenses, fireworks sales permits, and some other things, some other smaller things. Using money in property, this is typically mostly interest earned on municipal funds. Intergovernmental, this is going to be revenue received from other governmental units, so to the counties, particularly the federal, the state, or the county. Customs and services, this is going to be, in the year charges the water sewer fund for, you know, water sewer rent essentially, plus we also charge some bank credit card fees for the credit card that we pay online. And then we also have, you know, other court fees, kind of charge the sewer contributions. That's somewhat of a misnomer. Most of this is actually going to be, anytime you receive a rebate, reimbursement, refund, et cetera, it's kind of right in the act. That's how we do that into our financial system. Sale property of bond merchandise is mostly going to be bond sales or bond proceeds that we receive. proceeds that we receive, other fund sources, um, that is our here fund transfers. So I talked about transfers a little bit, that's essentially where we take, um, excess fund balance, we transfer it to other funds, um, that counts as a, essentially as an expenditure out of the operating fund. So like I said, we transfer, um, significantly a portion of the prior years, sales tax collections from the general fund, which is where it's received into the capital improvement fund, which is how we fund our, our city, uh, the big capital improvement. We built the pavilion splash pad with proceeds from our city sales tax, and we do that via transfer. Um, expenditure types, personal service, that's going to be personal cost salaries, benefits, et cetera, taxes, contractual services. Uh, this is going to be any service that the city purchases, so, um, you know, our audit fees are going to be contractuals, uh, R I T, uh, costs are going to be contractual lessons. Any physical thing we're buying, like a computer, that would be commodities, that's anything physically could be, could be buying. Capital outlay, uh, these are larger scale purchases that typically are not, we call normal operating costs, so, um, you know, the contractual commodities, that's going to be something we use for our day-to-day operations. Capitals are kind of one-time purchases for specific projects related to expenditures. Uh, debt service, that's strictly principal interest in any fees that we have on our city debt, including our temporary note, uh, process. Non-operating expenditures, these are, um, typically payments to other entities, like, so we leave your contribution to, um, like the women's club or things like that, that's going to be counted as non-operating expense. Um, like the actual accounts that we use to account for our payments to the library or the other organizations are kind of non-operating expenses. When I talk about transfers, that's the, that's the, especially the debit on the funds for transferring money from one company to another. Uh, this is an overview of all of our city funds, uh, through the first quarter, um, our revenue expenditures. So you see there that we have received more revenue, or excuse me, we have received, uh, more revenue than expense, but I pulled out some things like, uh, our, uh, transfers, typically I would not include in this kind of operating, write it down, but we do it, I, I showed it on the ledger, you know, we haven't, it's, I don't list that, or any of those, not really, money we're paying, that was the money we're shoving around. Um, and again, this just shows our, the black lines are fund balance for this, at this, that ended the first quarter for the last three year, or this year, the last two years, and the blue revenue, red is expense. So, general fund, I think you want to look at representing this on the expense side, if you want us to make sure that when you're doing, in the first quarter, that should be under twenty-five percent, so we're pretty much on pace to be operating where we should. And then we are, you know, higher than twenty-five percent for, uh, the revenue side, but again, remember that we received about half of our property tax levy in January every year, so that, that needs to be, that's spread out over the rest of the year. We paid down, so typically we'll have a higher percentage of received revenue during, in the first quarter. That's just showing, you know, the fund balance is higher in the first quarter than it has been in the last two, we're starting growing. We've been, um, collecting and saving fund balance in the general fund, planning to use it for some of the big capital projects that coming up, so you will probably see a pretty significant transfer of the general fund when I present the twenty twenty-five question a few months. It's just a little history of our property tax and sales tax, uh, revenue were pretty flat actually, on, uh, sales tax so far for the year, um, and that's kind of being seen statewide, as well as some of my colleagues are seeing the same thing, the sales tax is pretty flat right now. Again, our property tax did increase over the past several years, most of that's driven by our, uh, revenue assessed valuation, all the new things coming online, mostly. Um, uh, so far, about fifty-nine percent of our total tax revenues come from property tax, about thirty-two percent, uh, from sales tax, those numbers will even out pretty much by the end of the year, they'll be close to equal, but they'll still make up over ninety percent of our, our, uh, general fund revenue. Uh, this is general fund expenditures, again, we spend overall for the general fund about thirteen, that does not include any of the transfers, which we typically do during the second quarter, for the second quarter and the fourth quarter. Budget authority, uh, is as long as that, uh, is there for, we do. Administration, we have a very high budget over here, but a good portion of that is the, uh, our kind of catch-all, uh, verb to see, uh, capital discretionary line item, which is basically the line item we use to carry that significant fund balance forward through the year. You know, here on that, I'd, uh, concern about. And again, uh, I have a, I have a label up here with the blue, fifty-one percent of that is, probably this is probably the, uh, the majority of our general fund expenditures are for, uh, the police department, they're the, they're one of the only city operations that can operate a single, a single fund, so that's why, and they're the biggest department. Um, this is the water fund, operations, so we're pretty good on expenditure, or revenue we're right about what we expect to be for that, this time of year. Uh, revenue tends to jump up a little bit during the warmer months, as people use more water for watering lots, et cetera. And then, uh, transfers are the expenditures that I'm, where they need to be. We'll, uh, this transfer here, two hundred sixty-five thousand, that will transfer the bond, we'll try to make the, uh, bond payments on our, uh, water debt, which is the, uh, portion, or it's the, uh, the purple water tank, and then also the supply line, the system supply line that we built about ten years ago. Water fund, um, there was a, the reason that it shows lower that fund off to last year is because we have done a portion of transfers, which we have not done this year, so I'm not so, but like I said, that's a wise word, probably a wise word, or probably what we need. Um, sewer fund, same, uh, operating below twenty-five percent so far, uh, sales have been very good for sewer fund. Again, it's a very healthy fund balance there. You don't feel like seeing a fund balance that's almost decided here, but budget, it was decided, you got, you know, that target, that amount for sewer use. And again, the biggest, the biggest expenditure funds is going to be the debt in on the water through, uh, sewer street. Uh, street fund, very low revenue, that's most of this fund, this fund is transferred to the general fund, which we will do, um, in the second quarter, spends a lot, pretty good, okay, we transfer out here, we transfer fifty thousand to, with half that's reserved or half that's to, uh, capital improvement. Again, with the strategically bringing this fund's fund balance down, uh, we had a couple of years, and we did not use all of our allocation for street maintenance program, or street, street maintenance money, so we transferred, we're transferring it to the capital improvement fund, so we can use that money, uh, outside the budget here. Uh, bond major fund, I guess that's where we collect, uh, essentially, mostly funded through, uh, special assessment revenues, which we turn around and use to make the bond hands for the debt we use, uh, for the debt that's, you know, funded that way, and not, again, we levy a small bill for the city's own, uh, products that we're responsible for paying off. And then this here is the capital improvement fund, this is a non-budgeted fund, meaning that we are allowed to spend as much as we want to out here, because it's funded all through, pretty much through transfers from other funds. Uh, sometimes we'll also have, uh, funding from, uh, the ten notes for certain projects that, but again, those are, we make those payments with, uh, uh, you know, essentially that, those, those temporary notes are restricted for the purpose of those, those projects, so even though we may have, so essentially, if we have a million dollar projects, we'll put in, we'll, that will issue a ten note for a million dollars, we put that money, or the portion of that money that's going to be used for project costs in this fund, we will pay for those, uh, those invoices that come in from the contractor companies and whatever else for that project, and whatever's left over, uh, gets sent back, and we, uh, so let's say we only spend nine hundred thousand, we would send nine hundred thousand back, and then when we issue the permit, uh, bond on it, we don't want to issue that long. Again, if it went up significantly last year, we would get all those, uh, ten notes, and so, or actually, we have one that, uh, those.
Quick question.
Yeah?
Can you back up to the operating funds overview for just a second? Just wanted to make a quick comment. If the numbers and things that I was talking about, I think this comes as close to a snapshot of just a base operation of the city. I mean, when you start throwing in all the capital improvements, the transfers, and money things, it, it gets, those numbers kind of difficult to track, but what I like about this is that in two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-four, we can see that the base revenues of, of the, our general operating has gone from two million, two forty-eight to two million eight seventy-seven, and I can't tell which end of my bifurcate I'm going to be, um, but the total expenditures then, over those same three years, you can see it going from a million two to a million seven, uh, a million seven, so our, kind of the net, just off the base operations, without everything excluding the interest of two hundred twenty thousand, is our revenue is exceeding just our base operating, uh, this year by one million, one hundred and seventy thousand, so, uh, if, if we didn't do anything else, we didn't do any streets, we didn't buy anything, we didn't pay for anything extra, we didn't have any transfers in or transfers out, this is just kind of the base operation of the city, and it includes then the, the water and the sewer revenues and those things, right?
Yeah, this is every, this is all of our operating funds, all of our, um, special revenue funds. Uh, does not include capital funds, it does not include reserves, it doesn't include, uh, uh, our pastor, well, dedicated, that is, it would, it would see it anyway. So, um, I will, just as you're dragging back to the past here, I will, uh, with that, that interest is significant, um, you know, from, we've gone from an era of, you know, I was happy to get four thousand a year, that was a lot, compared to what we'd be getting in the past, to, you know, we've got, uh, you know, five plus percent, uh, on most part, because it's right now, we're just, we're under, uh, here, so here's what I think. Um, again, uh, we had a, 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 some of that bump was for, you know, additional property taxes that we received because of our valuation growth, um, a good portion of that is going also going to be, you know, solar building permits, uh, this year, or the last year, um, and then, you know, there's some probably, uh, growth in, uh, water and sewer sales as well, you got to be careful with that.
I guess for me, that, that's the one page, I think, in terms of, if you would have like a financial dashboard that we could take a quick look at on a quarterly basis. For me, for me, I just, that, that just kind of keep track of the base operation of the city, that's why I like this, and, and I appreciate the other detail too, because it's kind of like lanning, um, I mean, you, you start from this point, and then you start lanning all these other details, because what you do is complicated.
Well, I'm not going to argue with you in the opening.
But we have talked about this for about an hour, so.
But city operations are very complicated, and we operate certain things, certain ways, that this will kind of, yeah, sure, if you want to say give you an overview of the city's plan, sure it does, but, uh, there are specific things that we track for different reasons, because everything performs at a different way, so. I will make sure that you see this regularly, it's part of my regular operations out. I meant to also, I will, I will send a link out for you guys to look at our city's, uh, new, uh, bond website, our investor relations site, which is up and running now, and then also, also you'll link to our open gov site, and maybe at a future meeting, I can kind of demo that for you guys too, where essentially it's an interactive tool to look at our city financials online, so, and we keep those updated real quick.
And the other thing, I appreciate you kind of going over the definitions of those terms, because it's really specific to, to city government, and as we kind of developed our understanding of those terms, maybe makes it a little bit easier for us to kind of understand our numbers a little bit, so I, I appreciate you taking the time tonight to present the information.
Appreciate everybody singing.
We're going to, we're going to stay awake up here when you're talking. Thank you.
Okay, so the next team business item, one point two, is linear park lighting. Um, I just want to preface this, this is my first presentation at any council meeting ever, so please go easy, um, okay.
Right here.
Okay. All right, so linear park, Prairie Sunset Trail lighting projects. Um, background for this, I've done, the members of the city council requested city staff study the opportunity to install lighting along the Prairie Sunset Trail within linear park on the west end. Um, lighting creates a safer space for community members to exercise in early mornings and evenings, um, targeting some of our second and third shifters, and then opportunity out there on that trail. Um, the project would light the section of the trail west of Maine within linear park. Um, staff had to have identified a cost effective solution by partnering with Everdee. Some other options were vetted out that were extremely expensive, so, um, we've come up with a great, um, solution with Everdee. Um, this will be a table item for the purpose of this evening's agenda, as we still don't have a cost estimate from contractors for, um, our construction costs and, um, other materials that each way identified, and Everdee is still financing their supply. So this is the background, um, we had selected ten poles spaced at two hundred and seventy foot intervals, um, that will be on thirty-five foot poles, buried depth about five feet, so your light will sit at about thirty feet with a spray of a hundred fifty foot radius, so there won't be, it's not going to be like the spotlight effect, but you'll have some indirect lighting, so the pack will still be with it. Um, city staff provided the site plan attached in exhibit A, which illustrates the location of ten black fiberglass poles around the trail spaced in terms of these foot intervals. Um, it approved Everdee, and the city approved contractor will board trenches of conduit, stub the wire, run the wire, um, so it's more of a cost effective solution. Everdee has approved contractors, and they will suggest us, and then we can get a competitive bid, so that's why we wanted to tail this item. Um, Everdee would create the design, schedule for the installation of lights and poles, and with the connections with no design cost to us, it will be rolled into our franchise agreement with the standard fee that we pay per month for poles and lights. So this is a photo of what it will look like, a little bit nicer than just kind of like your standard wood pole, so that's why we decided on the fiber, the black fiberglass. Um, so our financials, this project is estimated at forty-four thousand six hundred fifty, that will be a one-time cost upfront, um, assessed to sixty dash three twenty dash eighty-six hundred, Parks and Rec Fund, Capital Ale, and approximately one thousand eight hundred dollars paid to Everdee annually, that's in addition to our already existing plans here, that would be the additional ten poles. And the wheel is not available here. So our recommendation is that it is recommended at the city council table, linear park, Prairie Sunset Trail lighting agenda item to the next city council meeting.
Any questions? I entertain a motion to, uh, table this.
I make a motion to table, and it's building, and, et cetera. Lighting agenda item until the next city council meeting.
Chris, the motion, say. Our receptionist, I was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Tea, very good.
Thank you.
That's better.
You're up, buddy. Our mayor and council, welcome to our Wednesday I need. The weather can never happen, we're happy about it. This item is, um, linear park centric playground upgrade. Now, little background, in twenty seventeen, the city council created the total one million dollar splash added for linear park. Um, linear park play often were expanded again in twenty nineteen, when a playground was constructed, featuring three standing play equipment and all resistant floor and place rubber surface. Uh, these amenities have proven very popular, as you know, that park is busy, busy, um, the park lacks inclusive play options. Um, at the direction of Vice Mayor Pete Fish, um, city staff solicited proposals for the addition of inclusive play features at linear park. Um, we talked with Play State Recreation, um, they helped with the last playground, and they assisted us with the design of an inclusive play area that would include new play structures. The playground would be
The playground would be constructed in the vacant area between the existing playgrounds. As you'll see here, we've got the playground next to Splash Bad, we've got the larger playground with that, and we're going to carve out that little area and put that nice playground down. The playground would include five proposed play structures, that include a sensory summit range, a selfie swizzler, zero grade is exclusive orbit merry-go-round, a sonata harmony music metal phone, and a temple trolley. Exhibit B kind of shows these, this is a sensory summit range, this is a neat little item where children can move along there, and you can change these little inserts to have different features to them, to, to kind of play to different needs that it wants. This is a selfie swizzler, this is a neat little bucket you sit in, has a kind of wobble around. Mayor, I know you'll be in there.
Just going to take any pictures.
I won't take any pictures.
I live close to.
We have cameras out there, so.
This is one, a neat one here too, this is an inclusive orbit merry-go-round. This is an item that is at great with the ground, so there's no lift, nothing to get up there, you can jump on that thing, you can roll on that thing, you can drive on that thing. This is the music metal phone. This would be put next to the sidewalk, and we're going to widen that sidewalk a little bit, so that way people can play on that, if people don't want to buy them. I know that some of my staff will be out there making music. And this is really the cool one, this is the temple trolley. This is a single-track, the lack of direction, kind of like a zip line. And as you can see, all ages, which is great, this is inclusive for everything. And that's really what we're going after, so all ages, people with sensory needs and whatnot can get out there and have a great time and play in the park. Playground, playground construction will require the relocation of two trees and realignment of several irrigation lines. If we begin shortly, work should be completed and playground opened in public by Everdee of two thousand twenty-four. And as I said, would be located between existing playground and include an impact resistant rubberized concrete surface. That is a rendition of what the playground would look like before we construct it. Pretty attractive, fits in now nicely, offers that exclusiveness that we've been looking for. If approved, the one, okay, if, if, the full cost of this right now is one hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred seventy-four dollars forty-one cents. We've got a little bit outlined cost out here, we've still got to get all of our bits for dirt work, irrigation relocation, and tree relocation. And because of that, we're asking the council to table this item tonight until we receive the rest of the bids. Preliminary bids are looking at anywhere between five and seventy-five hundred for the, to do those items. So it doesn't, it doesn't cost up a lot. The only concern we have is the nurseries have said that it's about a fifty-fifty chance moving trees this time of year if they were to do that. And so that's really the only concern, other than that, it should go without a, without a hitch. Do I need a motion for tabling that?
Yeah, they can make a motion. I, I want to add one, the temple trolley, you can buy a, a seat with a three-point seatbelt, so someone who, with, with immobility issues that may not be able to, you know, hang on in the traditional swing there, you know, they could be strapped into that and go on. I call it, it looks like a zip line to me, they can zip line back and forth on there, so. I don't know how we would avail that, because I think you gotta have one or the other on there, but I think you can acquire that seat for a few extra hundred bucks, so, but, anyway.
So we might have a motion on here to table this, like a motion to table if possible, and.
I entertain a motion to table.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table.
Keep making motions, Chris, the seconds, any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we will return this to the next council meeting again with full cost.
Thank you.
Next item is, well, I'm still at the back of the day. Before you start this, I want, I want all of our folks on and our friends over to know that we are going to have a community engagement meeting, for those of you stakeholders to kind of register, we're going to work with you on this schedule. Anything that has been out right now is hundred percent preliminary, anything like that. So we'll let you know in ad for time coming, and get involved in that. All right, two thousand twenty-four, street build works. The two thousand twenty-four annual street maintenance RFP called for bids on twenty-five segments and included a wide scope of services. RFP called for bids on full-depth reconstruction and heavy milliner overlay to Goddard Road. The full rebuild of Second Street from Walnut to Goddard Road, including an upgrade from gravelled asphalt on Second from Main to Goddard Road. Milliner overlay of Walnut Street from linear trail crossings south to twenty-third. And then we've got one smaller cul-de-sac in season subdivisions coming apart to address it, so we'll do that as well. City council approved that RFP for advertisement during the February twentieth meeting, it's posted on website October twenty-first. That initial RFP received three bids, you can see the bids up here. Best bidder was Pearson Construction at one million one hundred sixty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-sixty. Once the bid was received, the availability of additional free funding made it possible to see that there's for several additional projects, not included in our RFP. Those projects, the cost, and whatnot are on the next slide. First item is change order number one with Pearson Construction, and this includes a complete milliner overlay and some full-depth rebuild of certain areas, that First Street from Goddard Road to, from Goddard Road to Main and a millin- that's not correcting, Goddard Road to Walnut, my, my apology. They're going to clear it up there for them, a Goddard Road to Walnut, so that would be a full build across there, so Second and First. And then, first, about this, living fish, main street. So we're going to do, we did a center of main street last year. We're going to do north, north, so the north portion and the south portion, that's why we're bringing the main street as well. So we don't have to get it again. As I said, we got the milliner overlay Main Street, both of those projects came in at five hundred thirty-four thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars. And then the two thousand twenty-four street maintenance projects, these are the kind of projects we would typically do if we weren't doing the full-depth reconstructions and whatnot. These include the repair of twenty utility cars at various locations, various locations around town. The entire crack ceiling at the entire subdivision of Opera House Blazed, that will be done by South Central Construction. And then something neat that goes in the park that we're going to do, all-in-paving is going to come in, and in lieu of tearing out all the concrete, and we had some bad spots over there in the park, we are going to put an asphalt cap on it. And in the east side of the park that is asphalt, they're going to mill some of that smooth, and we're an asphalt betel. So it'll be all brand new, but it's significantly cheaper than, concrete was a little over a hundred grand just to do the west side. And we're going to get the whole park done with that new cap for seventy-six thousand. So the street maintenance projects are one hundred twenty-five thousand nine forty-two fifty-two. Total cost of all two thousand twenty-four street projects, the RFP, change order one, and the maintenance projects is one million eight hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars and twelve cents. Here's a little few maps of everything going on, this is a lovely North Front Road, it will, it will be lovely, it will be nice, it'll be yellow.
It's a real advertising opportunity. Time shop, East Art Run.
This road will be a full rebuild from one ninety-nine to approximately where the mirror is. Then this will be a milliner overlay, so this won't be torn up completely, though this, we'll go down a couple inches and put some new line, but this will be a full rebuild. As I said, we will have a community engagement meeting, and if we listen to everybody, we will work with everybody. And you will all have my number, or you'll knock on the doors every day probably. I'm the messenger, don't be hiding that. This is Second Street from Main Street to Goddard Road, this is the portion that will be turned from dirt to asphalt, which will be very nice, so we created an entire asphalt road from Walnut all the way to Goddard Road. Lot of truck, or bus tracks on that, that will be really nice. This is the remainder of Second Street from Main Street to Walnut, and that will be a milliner overlay, so that will be an entire new street, pretty much from Goddard to Walnut. Then we've got South Walnut, South Walnut here, to twenty-third, from the trail to twenty-third, that will be a milliner overlay, and there'll be some, some spot patching down here where, you know, there's nice parkable part. And then there's one that's that circle and season, small cul-de-sacs, but it's going to be ours if we get that. The additional project in the change order is a milliner overlay and with some full-depth repairs on First Street. Again, that would be from Goddard Road to Walnut. Anything about that would be done with First Street, Second Street, Main Street. And then as I said before, we got the remainder of Main Street, we got North Main, from Third to Kellogg, and South Main from the trail basically Santa Fe to. Full-up projects is, that has not been updated, my apology, is eight point, one point eight five million will be paid with local funds. One point four nine eight will come from capital improvement streets, capital outlay. Hundred fifty thousand will come from special, special highway street funds, capital outlay improvements. And seventy-six thousand of the park will come to special parks and recreation, capital outlets. Questions?
Mr. Mayor, could I address the council?
Please do.
I just want to highlight the amazing effort of our city staff. This is, getting this project to this point, I mean, this started well before I got here last November, but it was kind of like a cross-country trip. We had a few different people who were driving the bus along the way. Harland's team at CED were obviously extremely involved, especially with survey work and design on the Second Street transition. Brooks obviously been leading this for most of the aspects, and our new city planner, Tina, has proven invaluable, especially looking at helping us identify costs on some of these change orders and the additional work that we've been able to, to budget for this year. So we're going to be getting a lot of road work done, and I just want to applaud the, the staff that have been leading this project, because it's taken a lot to get to this point. We, I bet, members of the council who kind of started us down this road last year figured it'd all be done already, but these things take time and effort, and it's been fun to watch it come together, and we're excited to engage the community to get it from here to completion. There's still a lot of work to go, but after tonight, the, the fun part starts. At least we, I think it's fun.
I agree. I'm ready to get to the point where we're turning up roads and pushing it down. And I, I'd like to echo what Craig said, Harland's team has been excellent, Tina come on board with her experience, engineering experience, her knowledge with KDOG and PDC has helped us a lot come up with these costs, and helped us get done it quickly too, so they look fantastic. No questions, no additional questions?
Just any idea in terms of, I know we talked, maybe have trans systems kind of layout.
Well, trans systems is not involved in this one.
But we got the other issue at one hundred eighty-third street, I mean, that kind of, it's another work project that kind of.
We will definitely, and I, and I, I shouldn't say definitely, but we're pretty solid, we will not start that until we're going to have them up front here, of course, because we can't.
I'm just curious, which one would go first?
This will obviously go first if the one eighty-third has not been bid yet. And so those, it hadn't been bid, so we haven't received bids, we have open bids, and we have the board that, so that will be going on the road.
A, a goal certainly would be for whoever does the one eighty-third turn lanes to kind of come in right towards the end of this, and just try to get all this stuff out of the way, kind of pull the Band-Aid off, but we are going to be really intentional about the sequencing, because we're going to have work going on all over the place. We're going to have a pre-construction conference with our staff and with the traffic engineers involved in this work, and then we're going to open it up for some community, get community engagement in a subsequent meeting, where we'll have the engineers available and kind of present the plan, basically what we've just shared, and at that point, we'll receive the input from the, the community and try to sequence these in a way that's going to be the least amount of inconvenience. We're going to do our best not to make any promises, because contractors can be extremely difficult to hold accountable, but we'll have some, some, some ways to do that. Some of the things that was mentioned by my colleague, Russ, I think are doable, some of those are a little non-traditional, but, you know, we'll, we'll take a stab at it and make sure we put our best foot forward and, again, being as least inconvenienced as possible.
We, we were the night show, like, you know, we got Pearson to really jump on all this work, we've had, we've had good results from them. They're easy to work with, they're easy to take with, and so that's a plus for us. If there are any additional questions, comments, recommendations, recommended that the city council move to award the bid to Pearson, execute first and Main Street change orders, and authorize staff to execute estimates for miscellaneous asphalt work, all in an amount not to exceed one million eight hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred twenty-six.
Would like to make that one.
I'll make the motion. Of course, move forward with the Pearson, execute first, Main Street change orders, authorize city staff to execute estimates for miscellaneous asphalt work, and all amount not to exceed one million eight hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars and four cents. Second.
I'll make the next motion.
Don't ask me to repeat that.
Right, second, a lot, a lot, that's a lot involved. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good day for the city.
We're excited, we're excited, it's going to be some nice meter up there to get the road.
Good job, man.
Thanks. Let's see, administrator, back on the.
Our mayor, city council, I'm going to take a step to the side here. All these items I'm getting ready to present, these were put together by the city council alongside city staff during our annual goal setting session at the end of January. This is our quarterly check-in, if you're wondering, you know, the quarter ended a month ago, well, we didn't set the goals till a month of the year, so we're a little behind on that, but all of the progress that we've made is a testament to the group that we have working and to support the council. So really excited, just kind of checking with you guys on where we're at with this. We, we talked about some adaptive goals, some technical goals, low-hanging crews, I called them, I'm going to start out with the adaptive goals. On the wall over there is the Goddard business plan, and to get these adaptive goals, we basically went through there and took an inventory. Do we think we accomplished these, do we need, can we check them off our list, what do we want to carry forward and keep working on? This is kind of what we ended up with, if you want us to be original, you can look at that second frame object on the wall over there, the Goddard business plan. This is what we're working off of now, so. Goal one was amenities and entertainment, encourage development of the Starbond District, identify restaurant and retail matches and recruit matches to Goddard. We've been working extremely hard on that, I think my colleague, Mike Escoggin, our key development director, and I have had a couple dozen meetings addressing the amenities and entertainment factor, and we've had some really good leads, and we're still working on bringing some of those home. High-quality parks and rec, won't get too far into that, I think we're, the, the proof was in the pudding with some of the things we discussed tonight on that. Invest in new park space north of Kellogg, you know, that's, that's well underway now. Beautification of public space, similar, similar things being discussed tonight, looking at items we've had. Prove the visual appeal of the community's public art, we're working on a rural, year-old grant right now, I'll speak to that a little bit in administrator's report. The wayfinding signage, I'm going to cover that here in a minute. Beautification of public spaces, something we'll always strive to improve upon. Community connectedness, create a community information engagement plan to promote consistent dialogue with residents, create a long-range infrastructure plan. The tenure CIP is, is what we've got skeletonized right now, we're going to hope to get that adopted. I want to, you know, having Tina on board again is going to be super helpful with that, is, one of the biggest challenges with the CIP is, is having someone who can really sharpen a pencil and use an estimating on some of the projects that we've selected as priorities. And then goal number five, recruit Class A apartments in Starbond District and, and broader community. We modified that a little bit for the recruit Class A apartments, that wasn't on the original business plan. And then strengthen collaboration with planning commission on residential development strategies. The ideal around that was to have a joint meeting, which we haven't done yet, and I'll cover that here again too. The action goals, these are more specific, not a goal that can be accomplished with, you know, one or two steps. Goals that take a little bit of time to accomplish, so those are different from the technical goals or the low-hanging crews I called them, which we'll get into next. The rural water district four territory agreement, that's coming up later tonight. The North Park Phase One, you can see we've had progress on that on several occasions, there's a flyer over there in the corner about a open house where we're going to engage the community to help us take some of the funds. the community to help us take some of the fun stuff that we're going to put out over there. We're really happy with our partnership with PDC, sort of designing the master plan and schematic design for Phase One. In a perfect world, we're turning dirt by the end of the year, but we'll kind of see how that works out. The important part is that the ball is rolling and we're excited about it. The water pressure model master plan, you can see we've made some progress there. Project kickoff meeting is coming up here early next week. I've seen emails or staff sending over stuff to PDC, that's well underway. The purpose of that project was to make sure that all these developments on periphery of our community are going to be adequately served by water. The further out you get from the tower, obviously, pressure could become a concern, so we're trying to be ahead of the game and make sure we can address any issues that could pop up developing that master plan. The stormwater, we have an agenda item for that tonight. That's going to be an item we look to table the 20th as well, but we're going to update you on it. Excuse me, I think we already decided to bump that. Harland and Tina and Brooke have been working diligently on that. We were with a consultant who gave us a fairly astronomical cost on what that was going to be, so we decided we're going to take a crack at that in-house. We're super close to bringing that to you guys. I really wanted to do it tonight, but it just wasn't fully baked yet, so we're going to bring it to you on the 20th. Stormwater is a big concern, obviously it does. So the skater system project, great progress on that as well. Council approved our contract with the consultant there, you can see, and we had the kickoff meeting last month, and they're starting to check off all the boxes to continue advancing that project. Maple Street walking path, I'll learn a little bit more after our goal setting session. This one's really out of our control as far as really any of the components, now that we have the contracts with our partner agency on this. It's fully funded and managed by them, and we're told that they plan to construct it in 2025. That's going to be a 10-foot wide walking path from 135th all the way to 183rd. What a perfect connector to our brand-new North Park there, Maple and 183rd, so pretty exciting stuff there. 183rd turn lane project, we have a couple action items on that. We are working on acquiring right away from one other organization. We've got two of those secured. We're hoping that we can do some bid letting by the end of Q3 2024. And then, of course, 2024 roadway projects, you know where we're at on that. Then the RFP for design and project management of wayfinding and welcome monument signage. Not much progress made to date. We've had conversations, but really no action on that quite yet. With all the other things that have been going on, it's just been a project that's been a bit on the back burner. Good news is, we're only at Q1. We've got three more Qs to go. We've got a new assistant city administrator starting here in about two or three weeks, and we're going to throw him on that one. Preliminary planning phase for downtown streetscape project, so not a ton of progress there, but we do have our Main Street Design Committee established. We've had a couple of those meetings. Right now, our focus is on the mural project. I'm going to get more into our assistant city administrator, the administrator's report, but he's going to be primarily leading that from a city perspective, and his skillset aligns perfectly with that. So lobbying program and budget for grant dollars and legislation. To tell you the truth, I didn't realize I'd be doing as much of this when I took the job, but we've been meeting quite a bit with folks, state legislators, county commissioners, council people from other cities, partnering with different things, state agencies. You can see some of the grants that we've applied for and are applying for. We've even met with a U.S. senator, and we plan to do more of that. So super important that Goddard is out there and representing itself in these ways, so we can be at the table. There's dollars at stake, there's decisions at stake that impact us regionally, and so we're going to be at all those meetings to make sure we're a part of that conversation and hopefully leading some of them. The website revamp and the phone app, so in March, council approved that contract with Civic Plus for the redesigning of the app. The project kickoff meeting was scheduled, I think it got rescheduled. We've got something coming up on that soon, Matt, or did we meet on the website?
We are, I believe it's, even this weekend, actually, but yeah, it's getting going.
Okay, so our kickoff meeting's coming up for that. Sorry to put you on the spot there.
No problem.
The economic development policy, so Mike and I kind of looked at a first draft back in January, pumped the brakes on that one a little bit. We want to use the breadth of the statutes available to us as we focus on some real key market deficiencies. Felt like if we adopted an economic development policy at this time, it might tie our hands a little bit, so once we hit on one or two of those items, I think we're going to pick up the steam a little bit on that ECOVVO policy. Some other action goals, the single-stream trash contract, no progress to date. We're going to continue to try to get that one up and running this year, and it's just been a kind of a time element. Identify property for additional public facilities. We are in verbal negotiations for one property for consideration. We'll report more on that as it becomes appropriate. Kind of the purpose behind that is, is as a growing community, we need to have some vacant property in strategic locations for services that may be necessary in the future. Stuff gets a lot more expensive the more you put around it, so it's important that we get ahead of that. The mayor's advisory council, we had our first meeting in April, and I believe we're going to be meeting quarterly, I think, Mayor, and that went pretty well, got to know some of those folks that I hadn't had a chance to have much dialogue with, and it's interesting to hear some different perspectives on some of the stuff we have going on. Apply for the RACE grant, so we did not apply for that. It was a federal grant and staff time constraints just limited us. We are currently writing the KDOT Economic Development Program grant for the same project, a lot less cumbersome. I actually feel a little bit more confident in it than I do competing against all the other cities in the country on the federal program, so. The E-RAM, it's also been referred to as CPRG, Climate Push Reduction Grant, for the US 54 or 400 pedestrian overpass. The final product on that looked really good. I felt good about the application we submitted, so we'll see how that turns out. We should know in early July. The good news is, is we have five years to build and expend those funds, so you know, we'll, we get the grant, we'll start incorporating it into our capital improvement program and schedule it to work with the financing portion of that. Technical goals, the salt storage, we've had some progress. We've had some competing priorities that have caused a bit of delay, but we're going to escalate action on that. I want to get that wrapped up here in the next few months, or at least get to the point where we've got a project approved and can kind of have some idea of when we're going to get that done this year. The park items, some of those we've already checked off, the disc-off improvements, the parking, you know, that's been well-received. I was a little bit worried when they got done with it, especially when we got a lot of rain, that we're going to have some swamp holes over there, but they came back and packed it in, and everyone it seems to pick the park on the rock instead of the asphalt now because it's closer, so that is temporary. I want folks to know, when we do the downtown streetscape project, we intend to rebuild Santa Fe as well. The drainage situation over there, I think it would make sense to kind of run those simultaneously, and you know, Santa Fe, it needs some tender loving care. It would be really expensive to do a full rebuild, and so we did the temporary parking in anticipation that we wouldn't do a full rebuild in the next couple of years. The means park improvements, we have no progress to date. As of this report, we were looking at that as a likely 2025 project, but I do have a glimmer of hope that it's possible we do that this year, depending on, you know, what dollars we have left over in that fund. Once we get the other, I think, three park projects we discussed tonight, I think, Matt, $48,000 we thought may be left over for park stuff this year, assuming the other three items were approved that have been tabled.
I may have to, I've already sent the bill to Tina on it, we may have to reallocate some to a different fund, but I think we can, I do not think means park improvements will be an issue. We can do them if there's time, so I think we can do that.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Funding will be a problem.
Okay. Other technical goals, hiring, so city staff, you know, it can ebb and flow at times. We have a few unfilled positions right now, three public boards positions and one other position. We did go and new city planner hired Tina, who's been doing a great job. Our assistant city administrator starts May 30th. We are actively hiring a new customer care clerk, kind of part of our succession planning for some retirements that could occur. Matt calls them abandonments, but I don't think that's nice.
I always like to abandon people.
And we're also looking at an additional police clerk, so that's kind of a staffing snapshot there. It's really tough to get fully hired and stay that way for any long period of time, especially when you've got 30-plus employees. Goddard glance, there was a request for more community development projects, and we also asked to put the Mill Eddy comps in there and do some other financial info. I think that we have been doing that. I've taken a look at the last couple of Goddard glances, and I've seen content in there that's above and beyond what we had before we set this goal, so. I think maybe the financial piece we need to work a little bit on as far as when we start communicating through that in a greater way. We talked about connecting medical lodges to Walnut, there's that 15-foot easement there. I went over there and looked at that and I'm a little bit fidget about it, need to talk more with Harland and Tina and Brooke, what kind of drainage issues we might cause if we do that, but maybe some grading and some heavy rock could create an opportunity there. So no progress to date, but some conversations. Lowering the speed limit on Walnut, so a speed study was conducted in March. You know, the engineering and legal opinion on this doesn't call for a speed limit change, however, we do have some other options that we've been looking at. Children at play, we've seen some of those signs slapped up in a few of our subdivisions, that might be a stopgap until we can do a full-depth traffic and engineering study in the entire city. There's a lot going on right now. We don't, we're not necessarily prepared to take on that endeavor, but I want to say it is a high priority to have it done. Every city should probably look at something like that. I would say every eight to 10 years, if you're growing as quickly as we are, maybe five to seven. Traffic patterns change immensely over time when you're placing all these developments in different places, and we've had some real big changes on US 54. So when we do that comprehensive study, you know, we're going to flush out some of these different things on residential roads. I can't promise it's going to bear out speed limit changes in certain areas. The engineers have some real specific standards that they have to follow, and their standards mean a lot to them. They're not just going to arbitrarily stand something that, you know, may not hold up if there is a future liability issue. Harley, you can always disagree with me. Some technical goals, personnel manual update, we had that approved at the council meeting in March. Financial policy update, same thing. Office furniture acquisition, got that checked off. Appointing the governing body members, check it off. Annations, not so far in 2024, but we are working diligently on several. There were a few to round out 2023. I don't feel like we're behind in that regard. So for the first quarter or first four or five months, if you want to look at it that way, I'm really pleased with where we're at. I hope the governing body and our citizenry feels the same. There's probably things that we didn't think of during the couple of hours that we were here, and this is meant to be a roadmap. I believe it is malleable, and we probably want to come back together for another, maybe another hour or two together, maybe somewhere midway through the year when we start making it to quarter three, just to make sure we're still aligned on these items, and if we're clearing a bunch of them off, you know, let's put some more on, so. Any questions about the goals or from the governing body?
A lot of momentum, brother, brother. That's really good, fully impressed. I'm curious if Mike has got variant vibes or something.
What?
They've hurt for me yet.
This is the first meeting since January where your name isn't listed on the agenda, so we're missing, we're missing your smiling face and your speed reading.
Oh, thank you. Next quarter, I'll let him present the financial report. You talk fast enough, it won't last 30 minutes.
I'll summarize, money in, money out. Questions?
Great doodles, man. We've been doing a long job, so seeing momentum, a lot of stuff happening while we were trying to open.
I appreciate that, and I take a really aggressive approach to these things, and I know that can be strenuous to our team, and so I said it to be the end, but I really mean it. I appreciate you guys being such great teammates and leading on these items. Obviously, this is way more than any one or two or three people can accomplish, and we've come a long way in checking some of this stuff off already, and we'll see what the next seven or eight months bring.
We had a comments, appreciate the update and staff to thank you for all your hard work. I think it's a collaborative effort. Those two days that we worked together in January, I think, set a great tone for what we're doing, and appreciate the members on the council and their efforts to pull together and the efforts and the staff coming up with the list. And it's always nice when things, there's a plan laid out and it gets executed, so I'm really thankful for everyone's efforts. Appreciate it. We need to vote on this?
Nope. I'll just go right into I-6, Mr. Mayor.
We do.
Linear Park Trail connectors, so we've been in the process of planning a project that would create a bike head connection to Linear Park from the residential area south. These streets are named after trees, and I oftentimes forget which trees they are, but I want to say pine and spruce. It would create a new, oh, it's right there, I should have just read. Mayor and I had a long day today. Okay, this was second, a long meeting, so bear with us. So this project has taken some additional planning. It's not quite as simple as hauling some dirt in, sticking in a couple pipes, and pouring some concrete. There's a pretty significant drainage channel that runs through there, and so we want to make sure we're being sensitive to that. You can see here, my colleague Tina put together this illustration that kind of shows where those connectors would be located. Obviously, the one on the residential road furthest east, you've got a little bit longer to stretch there, and I think there's a bit greater of a great change there as well. We've been working with NBI on this project. They've been the only company to respond to big requests thus far on our stormwater work, and they also plugged in a price for this, and we figured the time, economies of scale, is probably going to be the best price we could get. There will be an amount of survey and design work necessary to ensure the proper flow and that'll be completed by Harland's team. Over the last couple of days, staff have determined we'd like a little more time to define the scope of the project and explore some different options, do some cost comparisons on materials. One of the things that we've been looking at over the last day or so, specifically Brooke and Tina, is a placement of perhaps a bridge structure versus just going, you know, with the concrete walking path, so a little bit more cost associated with that, so we're going to kind of balance that. We might give you like an option A, B, and C, and see what you guys want to do with it, but in the next week and a half, we're going to try to get some more competitive bids. I don't think we'll have the design and engineering done, but we might have a little bit better idea of the cost for that's going to be as far as Harland's kind, and we just want to refine the project a bit, bring it to the complete package with both design material and infrastructure cost. Right now, we think it's going to be about $33,500. We do a cost multiplier to the estimate we got from NBI to come up with that $8,500 for the design and survey work. Of course, that, again, that's just the, if we're going to do concrete walking path. So we kind of have this as option A. This amount might tweak a little bit between now and the 20th, and then we're going to bring another option perhaps that looks at like a wood or fiber or metal bridge, something like that, and then we can get into a little bit more expense, so we'll bring this back to you guys. We're going to ask you to table it to the May 20th, 2024 council meeting. Any questions?
Make the motion to table. He makes the motion to table. Every second, so all in favor, say aye. Next item.
PC replaced, like my seven computers to replace current work stations that are nearing their operatic stages. 24,700 in computer appliance CR, almost made about half of that, 13,000. The, this'll be Sarah's computers for replacements, so Hattie's, Mike's as well, and we're asking for some Oregon monitors and some different memories for all the GIS stuff he does. And then we got Ford PD, two option PCs, one of the Sargeons, and then, well, this is going to be purchased through Imagine IT, who does all of our IP work for us, helps set up the PCs. They will, you know, arrange for them to be sent here, and then, you know, physically have a version here that you can... They will, you know, arrange for them to be sent here and then, you know, physically have a version here that they have set up. It would be a portion of this I showed here. Mike is, it's split between these two cost centers that are coming up and playing a study. And then a portion Kathy will be from this court. She also does admin work. So we split it up into admin and, as well. And then what for the, obviously, the equipment department. Is it blown there? When he's up here at school?
Any questions?
Just got a more of a curiosity. What do we do with the old ones?
Anything that can be, we'll either recycle it or I will ask if we can do something as far as, like, there's some cities that will let employees buy them, show up personally used. I'll see if we can do something like that maybe or donate to other organizations in town that all felt the way and everything else. I'm not sure what the security stuff would be with that. My thought would be on ours in any way.
I was just curious.
Some of this, I mean, if you go through our storage areas around here, you'll find mountains of cable and everything else. And then pack rat with lots of stuff, but we would be better about getting rid of that stuff lately, so.
Any other question? Would you like to make a motion?
Do you make a motion to authorize purchase of the PC replacements from Imagine IT? Twelve thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars.
Pete makes the motion.
I second.
Chris, the second. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Harold, Mayor, City Council, the wholesale water purchase agreement with Rural Water District number four. A little bit of background here, small tags. City staff and members of RWD four have been working toward a purchase agreement whereas the city can make purchases of water from the Rural Water District to secure our ability to keep up with local water demand pressures resulting from our community rapid growth. A little bit of forward thinking here. There were several variables to consider while working through these discussions, mostly of concern with the volume of water with which the district system could physically manage the time Goddard. We kind of use that as a framework of trying to figure out how much we could buy from them per year, a max amount, I should say. Right now, we got this to thirty-point-five-seven million gallons per year with the anticipation that the number could grow based on the distribution's systems performance and any potential future enhancements. Just to kind of give you an idea of where we're at, thirty-point-five-seven million gallons is approximately eleven percent of the total volume of water that we pumped in twenty twenty-three. It's about nine and a half percent of what we can legally pump. So it's not a physical sense of an issue where, you know, there's not enough water in the ground. It's, it's the regulatory authorities that have put this cap on us. So three hundred twenty million gallons. The turn to the contracts identifies specific times and dates where the city can receive the water and the volume of water the city is allowed to receive during those specified time and dates. We're trying to accommodate their system to make sure that we're making these purchases during times of day, or I guess we're taking the water during times of day where there's not going to be a lot of demand on the system. So thank in the middle of the night, eleven PM to five AM. And we have some different months in there as well. Obviously, during the winter, there's going to be less stress on the system than there is during the summer. And so we've got some parameters there. And of course, they could deserve the right to offer us additional water at their discretion. Let's say things go really well with the system and thirty-five million gallons is, is working out really well. They think maybe we could crank it open a little bit more. If you want to take it for whatever reason, they could send that to us at their discretion. Any additional water accepted beyond the amounts listed in the contract would be understood as temporary and they could revert back to the original amounts at any time. The temporary excess would not alter the original amount to exceed amounts. Any accepted offer of additional water would be charged at the rates in existing, which we'll get into in a bit. There is a pump station necessity and I'm under the impression that the pump station could ensure the water received during the appropriate hours is provided earlier. This is a ten-year agreement and it would commence upon the completion and acceptance of the new pump station facility. You guys can probably imagine that designing something like this is going to take a number of months. Acquiring is going to take a number of months. Getting the regulatory approval could take a number of months. We don't want to eat into our ten years while we kind of wait on this thing to cover tuition. So this really won't, that ten-year clock doesn't start until we crank that puppy on and start getting the water. So upon mutual agreement, it could be extended for a period of five years under the same terms. The district has to notify the city with at least three years as to whether it wishes to extend the agreement. I just gave you all these, you know, things that can make it so it takes a little while to get this project going. Kind of look at this three-year notice. Let's say they don't want to sell us water anymore for whatever reason. Three years seems like a long time to plan, but these things, the days go by fast and finding another source, you know, we want a little bit of time. The three years would make ample time for other arrangements should an extension not be agreed upon. A three-year request at any rate would be needed to be given out to the other party if any, if either party wished to terminate the agreement. The council approves executing agreement, de-agreement. The next steps would include working on terms for cost sharing, engineering, construction costs necessary to the pump station, then applying for project approval permitting from the state. So think of this as like walk, crawl, run. This is kind of getting us moving here. This is probably the, the, you know, the first stage and maybe the most important to get us to the next steps of this. I want to talk a little bit about risk and this is maybe something we didn't cover a whole lot in previous conversations, but this is outlined in the contract, but they have applied for it, expect to receive permission from the state to be allowed to supply us the water. I think the headwinds on that are very favorable. There's not a real high concern there, but I just want to mention it. The, the other risk is that they are pursuing an extension of time to their perfection period. And so right now, their perfection period closes in December of twenty twenty-six. So what that means is right now, you know, I'll just use us for comparison. We're allowed to pump three hundred twenty million gallons. They have some amount that they're allowed to pump. They're pumping a lot less than that. Whenever you're pumping a lot less than that, there's a great difference between what you're pumping, what you're allowed to pump. The state's like, hmm, maybe we'll creep back and take some of those rights away from you because you're not using it anyway. So the point is, is that if they don't, if they're not allowed to reopen their perfection period, the state could reduce the amount of water that they're allowed to pump, which then could affect obviously the amount of water we can buy from them. So the risk is that if we spend, let's just throw out a number here, a few hundred thousand dollars on infrastructure to set all this up in December twenty twenty-six comes and the state doesn't give them the green light to keep pumping the amount of volume that they are now, that could make it so we got to crank how much we're buying back from them a little bit. So that creates a little common interest there. Maybe we'll make another trip up to Topeka and try to work with them on getting those rights perfected. It's not a huge concern. I have another strategy in my head where we put the pump station in an area that we could maybe also connect to another agency, a lot bigger one, that's kind of to the east of us. That way, if there was an issue in twenty twenty-six, we'd already have a pump station. Now we're just talking about buying some distribution to get to that from that other place that I mentioned, should they be so willing. A lot of other people buy water from them. So I feel like that could be a good strategy to where mitigates that risk of their perfection period not being extended past twenty twenty-six. So take it ahead here. I'm real happy with the cost of three dollars per a thousand gallons. You know, the negotiations are pretty smooth on that. I'm really thankful for their chairman and their legal team, of course, ours as well. Bob Kirkendall was, was great to work with in, in representing the city on this matter. I kind of threw out some, some figures here on that pump station. That's excluding the design, engineering, freight and installation. We would like to cost share that with the Rural Water District. So we might, like I said, just run, crawl, walk, whatever that saying is. It's getting late tonight. But we'll have to go, probably do a separate cost sharing agreement for the pump station. I anticipated the earliest this is going to be a twenty twenty-five expense. So we'll work with Matt on, on budget and bring that to you guys here in a few months. But that, that, whatever our share of that expense, I would think would occur in twenty twenty-five. So other additional steps, city staff would present an ordinance to council, adding a water utility user fee to create a source of revenue to cover the cost for the water purchase. Just in the most simplest terms, it could be whatever our monthly bill is, the Rural Water District, we divide it by the number of meters we have and everyone shares a little bit in the cost. It's not going to be a significant amount. We'll have a different formula than that, but just give me an idea of what I'm talking about when I say an ordinance to adjust user fees. So and I believe that ordinance should be presented in tandem with considering the approving of the pump station project. So legal team has approved this to form. Rural Water District has signed. And so the ask of the governing body tonight is to authorize our esteemed mayor to execute the wholesale water purchase agreement with RWD four as attachment to the date. I'd love to take any questions you have. Harland would be a great resource of knowledge too. And of course, our city attorney, Bob Kirkendall, who was involved in the developing of this agreement. Brooke would probably also stand for questions.
I would, but I think you'd answer it better.
I don't know about that.
Craig, if I could just offer one, at the last Rural Water District meeting, even though their perfection period ends in, into twenty twenty-six, they're going to turn right around and apply for the same amount of water right immediately. So that is, even, even if that perfection period gets cut off twenty twenty-six, they're, they're, they're going to go right back and, and try to get the additional water right back. So back to their hundred sixty million gallon that they have. So there is some works in progress there to ensure that they're going to have the supply extended into the future.
When they do that, is there a chance that they, that there's a lapse, like a period where they don't have the rights and they're not able to, you get what I'm saying?
Well, I think because we have until twenty twenty-six for that perfection, the, the time period to get an answer on this new replacement water right should be able to get occurred in that period of time. There is also Division Water Resources has, Stafford Field Office has told them that there is a good possibility that that twenty twenty-six deadline will get extended based upon this agreement now being in place with the city of Goddard. Because Rural Water District essentially has a new relatively large customer. And so there's justification for extending that perfection period. So I, there, there is always a chance of a lapse, okay? But I think the probability is relatively low.
So you're fairly comfortable with this?
Yes.
I, I teetered on whether mentioning it. I didn't want to be the, the guy eight years from now, the one percent chance something went bad.
Yeah.
Now, honestly, I'm a jumble, though, you know, that's, that's why I ended up including it in the presentation.
How long does this care mark last in the business? How long is that projected on?
There's not a, a real firm answer to that. I mean, this has potential to grow, which would be great. I, I think it buys us a few years for sure. It's really going to depend on how the system performs when we crank that pump station open and the other factors we mentioned with the perfection period. If they're willing to sell us an amount much greater than the thirty-five million gallons, I mean, there's a lot of variables. So it's hard to give a firm answer to that question. But I, I think it is a great solution and something that we're not going to stop pursuing other opportunities to better our situation, but I, we all will feel a heck of a lot better when this is signed than we did, you know, beforehand.
Craig, do you mind if I address the perspective? When, when we do our perfection, renew our perfection period here, it is, it is absolutely seamless. They don't stop our amount we can pump for any period of time. They just basically say, okay, we are agreeing. You keep that perfection period open. Now, when they perfect it well, they take that five-year window and they take the year that you pumped the most water. And that's what they base, if they perfect it, they base it off that. And like Craig said and Harland said, now that we are purchasing water from them, we are a big customer. And that will most likely drive them to keep that five, to open another five-year window for perfection.
One of the other things that Brooke and Harland were working on long before I got here was reopening our perfection period. The mayor and vice mayor and I kind of carried an application around the state house several months ago to expedite that process. And it's on the very last, last part of that. And we would expect to have a good answer within the next few weeks.
I would hope so. They told me by the end of May, of course, it's a, it's an estimate. But I'm hoping by June one, we know what's going on with that. And if they open those up, we're going to pump them living water up.
There's really three strategies that we have. And after tonight, and once we get this other issue sorted out, which we're very close on, we've accomplished two of the three already. So I feel real good about that. Not, not for discussion tonight because of trade secrets.
No, no, I guess the other thing I would say is maybe another strategy is conservation.
Yes, that we haven't discussed much of that.
And maybe we need to spend some time in the next six months.
Mayor, I am, I was at the water conference, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was at the water conference a month ago and KMU, talking to KMU, they do free water conservation plans. So I've reached out to them. They've sent me the initial data request. We're putting that together. We'll send it in. They will do a hundred percent free water conservation plan for the city based on our wells and our usage and, and all that good stuff and projected growth. Once that is finished, bring it in, we can definitely present it to council so you're aware of it. And if we choose to do a conservation, if council chooses to do some type of conservation plan at that time, that is obviously up to you.
And I, I want to just highlight a couple of things that go into that. That way we don't strike fear in the people thinking, well, we're not going to be allowed to use our water. That's not the case. They, some of these plans include things like offering a rebate if you've got a low-flowed toilet or washing machine or something like that. You know, you know, there's different things like that that are all individual choice. You want a rebate, you can participate in the program. You want a teeny little discount on your water bill, you can, you can do these few different things. And I think there's really good return on reducing usage when you utilize those programs. There's some citizens that'll really like to, to take advantage of those to save on their monthly costs. Bob?
Yeah, I did have a conversation with the attorney for the Rural Water District recently, who had noted that the contract is silent on who bears the cost of this pump station. And I think that he was under the impression that it would be borne by the city. So any allocation will probably have to be negotiated again with the Rural Water District as to that.
I would, I hundred percent agree with Bob's point. At least twice, maybe not three times, I mentioned during Rural Water District meetings that we will be cost sharing the cost of the pump station. However, I alluded that we're, we're a much bigger agency with a greater budget, more users. I don't, I'm not going to suggest it's a fifty-fifty cost share. Maybe it's something like four to one, whatever. We'll get into that later. But I never anticipated that the city would be paying a hundred percent of that. So again, it's, it's a, it's a, you know, crawl, walk, run. We're, we're going to hit this first and then we're going to get into the negotiations on the pump station. Then we'll have the unit of the ordinance and then we'll be going, so.
I guess one other, maybe small item where we could save a little bit of water, figure out how to recycle the water through the water park.
Maybe about ten million gallons a year.
I would say it's just a little one.
We've, we've got some ideas.
Yep. I like how close our pool is to it. That could create some circulation options. So of course, we're going to look at that.
But I think that's, I, I just think we need to be proactive on those things more than smaller. Water is, I can remember back before Keaton was born in the eighties. In Ellis County, they passed a, they created a water conservation district that had ten steps. Step one was, you know, watering every other day. Step ten was no water. And we see that put into writing in our, you know, state ordinance and stuff. I think out further west waters, they've been a little more conservation-minded than maybe we have in Sunka, Kansas. But there's, we need to, we need to be aware of those things.
I think we talked about that. There was something like, wasn't there something about that?
In the past, we have.
We have talked about it, but there was something that was better to have fresh water instead of. water instead of recycled water. Do you not remember that?
So if you're talking about the splash pad?
Yeah.
We did, and after the issues with another splash pad in town, we decided that probably not a good idea.
That's a good idea.
We have had an informal.
Affect or.
We've had, in the past, we've had an informal scheduling of watering days during the summer months where, you know, it's three days a week, it's the, you know, even number addresses. We have three days a week, it's odd number addresses. We've done it informally in the past, particularly when we were in drought conditions. So we can kind of formalize something like that as well, and I'm sure we've done it. I don't think it's any pressing matter, but I just think we need to kind of be mindful of that. Where are we? Someone make a motion to execute this contract?
I'll make a motion.
Krista makes a motion. Keaton seconds a motion to execute the, no, execute the grant of that. Rural Water District Number 4. Any questions? All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 9.
Thank you. As you know, the code of the city of Goddard prohibits consumption of alcohol on behalf of the property owned by the city, county, or state, and unless we pass an ordinance to allow it. And the chief of commerce will be posting the Goddard name to market on November 12, July 9, July 13, March 11, September 8. And proposing an ordinance to allow the consumption of alcohol at 11:00 a.m. on August 8 between the hours of 2:00 and 5:00 p.m. Rather than passing one ordinance for each event, I listed all the dates for the Main Street Market. The ordinance will take effect upon publication advertised symbol. There's a small publication fee associated with the publication and the time symbol, and the legal form has been approved, asked for. The recommendation is to approve the ordinance by waiving the reading of the ordinance and then consider the ordinance by vote confirmation. Is there any questions?
Any questions? See if we can get through this without messing about. Make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance. I'll make a motion, waive the reading of the ordinance. I'm going to make some motions. Keaton seconds. All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Consider the ordinance in vote confirmation. We have a motion to do that.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Amber.
Second.
Keaton seconds. Brooke.
Councilmember Hall. Yeah. Councilmember Fresh?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Councilmember Traylon?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
The ordinance number 960.
Very good, thank you, Karen. The administrators report. Letting the home stretch.
Do we have Mike to read this?
What?
Honorable mayor, it's a chance here. I'll try to be brief here. A few of these things we've already covered tonight. Street projects and the stormwater stuff, I'm going to skip right over those, it's been green heats, and you already know where I'm at with the street stuff. Community center update, the only outstanding item that I'm aware of is fixing the rear and side doors, which are, they stiff and they're big heavy doors. Everything else is pretty much done. We have the sound absorption panels up, the ADI equipment's in, the electronic lock system is in. On May 6, we made registration live for the civic organizations. I'm really appreciative of Amanda Trevelle helping kind of funnel all that and the work of our staff, Terry Lamond and Sarah Simon, was kind of going through the painstaking task for proving all of them, making sure they all jive. So I think there's a little work to go on that, but it's coming along nicely. On the 20th, we're going to cut it open to the broader public. Terry brought up a fantastic idea, put the QR code behind the rent needs, and hopefully someone will want to rent the new community center, so that would be interesting to implement. The cross-connects agreement, I already mentioned, next steps include planning the pump station project, and user fee ordinance to cover the cost of the water purchase. Update on the art cuts, I received this update from Tina and Brooke today, they're at the regular meeting. North Frontage Road will reopen on May 20. There are 31 working days remaining, the project is 87% complete. That 31 working days, what that means is, is if those 31 days pass, we could start collecting liquidated damages. It doesn't mean that we anticipate it'll take 31 more days to be completed. There will be an art cut open house. I think this is important to note, so I want to say it again, there will be an art cut open house on May 30 from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. at the community center. We'll have engineers from Trans Systems to the UBD in presenting and answering questions. The assistant city administrator, his name is Ryan Schratt, he is the current community development director of City Value Center for the previous eight and a half years. Ryan brings a wealth of experience and knowledge which will be vital in advancing the aims of our growing city. His first day on the job is May 30, and just note this position's been vacant for almost a year and a half, so we're really excited to get a fill. Monthly work sessions, I've kind of teased this in formerly in conversations I've had, and I think we're to the point now where we want to actually implement it. These meetings run into 9 o'clock, you know, we want to kind of see if we can shave that down a little bit by having a once-a-month work session for the city council. This would be like a new to one thing. We would essentially have a public meeting at noon, and we would get in as much business as we can, and at 1 o'clock, cut it off, and we don't get done, we just start working on at the next city council meeting, the first or third Mondays of the month. So I think that extra hour could really help us keep these meetings from running so late. We would also look to do this to, you know, serve as a communication tool and ensure that staff and the council are well-aligned on the initiatives that are being worked on at city hall. This isn't unique, we're seeing this practice in several other peer communities, so the more you grow, the more meetings you have, and that's just part of, part of the game. So we're going to be checking schedules as a staff, I want to make sure we don't pick a date that conflicts with court or some other regularly scheduled training that we have here. We're going to be suggesting a date at the next council meeting. Again, it'll be once monthly, sometime in the middle of the month for one hour. I want to recognize our city planner one, Tina Powell. I want to take a moment to do that because she was working on a project with her previous employer, it was the Academy Avenue Project, and we were notified that that project won the project of the year award granted by the American Public Works Association. We were told that Tina played an integral role in the success of this project before she began working for our community, and we wanted her accomplishment to be known. So otherwise, since she's not there anymore, no longer to be there to congratulate. So Tina, great work. I got a quote from, I got a quote from one of her colleagues that worked on a project with her. He said, "Without her teamwork and constant support, it would not have happened. She's so deserving of recognition." So glad to do that. We always want to highlight when our employees do great things. The capital improvement program, next one or two meetings will be presenting the 10 Year CIP, which is a roadmap illustrating upcoming capital projects, cost, financing, and prioritization. Community development update from my colleague, community development director, Micah Stoggin. We had nine new residential construction permits pulled in April, equating to nearly $3 million in valuation. The planning commission meets this Monday to consider the mayor's specialty facade variance, the Goddard Trails and Pool House site plan, and the Arbor Creek South final flat. A few future agenda items, stormwater projects and the stormwater maintenance fee, that's going to be a charter ordinance. Linear Park lighting the trail connectors, 23rd Street South addition petitions, final flat Arbor Creek South, the ATP grant application. So this would pay for the engineering and design aspect of the pedestrian bridge over past US 54. It's like, probably going to be like a $5 million project, so this is going to be really expensive just to do the engineering and design, which typically we think is about 10% of the project cost. This grant would pay for that engineering and design work, so I'm going to bring that to you guys. Laserfish cloudside package, Matt kind of talked about how we have some bundles of cord and retired technology. We've also got a lot of old records that could likely be purged. A lot of the records that we have were legally required to keep for a certain amount of time. There's probably a lot that we have that has passed that time. This laserfish cloudside package, I won't pretend to know how it works, I just know that you can digitize all that old stuff really quick. And we're seeing a lot of other cities use it, so I think Matt and Terry are working on that one together, we can see that coming up at the next council meeting. RHID for Will development, Sound Labor for a special event, the code of meeting procedure and governing body manual, kind of been on the back burner, but they're still in sight. I just wanted to also make note that earlier today, Seddon County adopted a resolution finding adverse effects, essentially vetoing the rural housing incentive district for the Goddard Apartments project. And a few other items to end on maybe a lighter note. The North Park Open House will be Thursday, May 30 from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. Heavy orders provided. I mentioned earlier, the Main Street Design Committee is working on a rural mural grant application which would place a mural on the South Wall of Street. I also want to note that we had a lot of folks in our community come together for Neighbors United to serve others, and we are very thankful for that. Any questions about any of the items in the administrative report?
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. Governing body comments. Krista?
I would like to thank Russ and all of the Prentice Road businesses that came and spoke and told us our concerns, and I think that it's good for us to know and really have some understanding of how that's going to be affecting you, and hopefully we can get those things resolved quickly and smoothly. I'm not sure if all of your hopes can be fulfilled, but we obviously have a staff that is wanting to accommodate as quickly as possible. And I want to say, Tina, I have seen you all over the place, and I just love, I love that you're out there and you're talking to people and you're getting things done. I mean, just randomly driving, I've seen you out there, so thank you. It's awesome. And then Randy, thanks for your interest in wanting to serve, and hopefully you'll get the.
Get the nod.
The nod, yes.
Sure. I was teaching a class last weekend before some unfortunate things happened, and Julie Stinson, who is the director of emergency management for the county, I mentioned to her that I was being considered, and she said, "Somebody that knows what's going on." So I think we'll get some support from that side.
Okay. Very good. And thank you again to city staff for putting everything together. You know, you make our job simpler by letting us know all the details, and so I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Go ahead. Just move down the road.
First of all, very excited to be moving forward into roads projects. It's been a real crawl, walk, run process. Kind of felt like a lot more crawl for a little bit than the walk and run, but I'm very excited to see that we made it here. I'm excited to see these roads get torn up and finally get the roads that the city of Goddard has needed for a long time. This is something that it shouldn't have taken this long to do. It shouldn't be as big a project as it is, but it is, so I'm glad that we have the people in place now to finally catch up to what should have been taken care of. Secondly, Goddard Main Street Market, just because it's Mother's Day, doesn't mean we cancel any market. Moms love markets, so bring them on out. We're going to have some special things to give to your moms. Because of Russ and Shelby and Ace Hardware, there's going to be some plants available for moms. I'm not going to go too much into detail, you have to come see it for yourself, but it's going to be worth bringing mama out. I know I am a big-time mama's boy, so I'm trying to convince her to drive out to Goddard, but I don't think I'm going to succeed in that. But I will be out there, and I'm looking forward to that. Randy, congratulations, sir. We wish you the best of luck in the rest of this process, but can't think of anybody better to be in that. When I saw communication and saw your name next to it, I thought, oh, it makes perfect sense, because that's the communications expert of Goddard. So, yeah, excited for that. Tina, I just wanted to echo what Councilwoman Hall was saying. We are so lucky to have you here, and we are so proud of what you were able to accomplish in days, but we got you, we stole you. So I had a phone call with Craig yesterday. My wife was walking in the park, and she said, "There's some lady in a white suburban. I think she's watching me." So I called Craig, and I was like, "This?" And he's like, "Tina's over there working." And I was like, "Well, that makes sense, because you worked very hard, and it is very appreciated." So thank you to all of our city staff for all of your efforts. There's a lot of big things, a couple things that got tabled that are big things coming up that I know you've worked hard on, but, you know, things like this street bin and going through the annual goal check-in, man, we are moving in Goddard, and I love that, and I thank you guys so deeply for all of your hard work and willingness and all of that. And lastly, Mary, I appreciate you and all the fights that you've been putting up for us with these RHIDs, and maybe they're not going the way we hoped, but I am so thankful to have you championing Goddard and all of that, so thank you, sir.
Now, I'm going to say, I'm ready to go.
Hit over. Ditto. So also notice that Chief's got everybody wearing cowboy hats, so please just.
Couple things briefly. I'd like, I'd like to suggest if you guys agree with me to make a proclamation and have May 31 recognized as Rick and Vicky Kilmer Day for all of his work and his wife's work and teaching and working with our kids in the community. I just think that would be a nice thing to do, to recognize the Kilmers for their years of service. And, that's right, I'm a good guy. Another thing, number two, real quickly. I have some concerns about the stop sign on the South Frontage Road when the art cut gets finished for traffic going east. I'd like to maybe send a letter to KDOT and just have, just to put on record that we have some concerns with that. I don't want to make them upset, but I think we can do it in a polite and respectful manner. I think that the monthly working launch hopefully will allow us to have better attention to sometimes, it'll just give us some time to like hash out, maybe things like we talked about briefly, water and things, hopefully that would be a good thing. And I just wanted to make a real brief statement as it relates to the RHID. I just want to publicly thank the Seddon County Commissioners for taking the time to listen to Goddard City's side of that issue. We do respect their decision, and we look forward for working together with things in the future. I mean, they took the time individually to visit with us, and there are other things that we can partner on and work on, and hopefully those relationships will bear fruit in a lot of other things that we do. So I did want to make that statement publicly, and I do appreciate that they were gracious with their time and willing to hear both sides of that issue, so. With that, I would take a motion so we can go home.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
There we go. Hearing no objections, the motion passes. Good evening.